Good evening. Meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, Wednesday, May 4th, 2022, in the Ocoy Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall 16, Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649. It is 7:00. We are broadcast live on local channel 18, streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website, I will call the meeting to order and ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda, approval of the meeting minutes from April 6th. Those were mailed out a couple of days ago. Comments, questions, suggestions, edits? Hearing none?
The nurse has written for April 2nd.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, there you go. That's it. Okay, public discussion, first on the list is Lynn Barbie.
Good evening, Lynn Barbie, 73 Surf Drive. Mr. Chairman, I know you were not able to hear in person from the residents who commented at the last, at the previous planning board meeting on April 20th. Hopefully, you have taken the opportunity to watch that meeting on Mashpee TV YouTube and to reflect on those comments. As I promised on April 20th, I have held until tonight's meeting my comments on your verbal and written attacks on some elected officials. There were more than two elected officials at the April 9th LCP workshop, but you only attacked two. That reeks of prejudice. There were also a number of volunteer and appointed committee and/or board members who could have been influential in the discussions. None of these people tainted, in quotes, using your word, the results despite your allegations. My major complaint to you is that your public comments, the subsequent letter, was an insult to all of us who came to the LCP workshop. We are not uninformed, gullible puppets who cannot create and hold an opinion or idea. Maybe you didn't mean to insult us, but you sure did. I hope you will apologize to all those who did come, whether elected or appointed, or more importantly, interested and concerned citizens. Now, I hope we can get back to the real business of the planning board. I spent my comment time at the last meeting focusing on the LCP. I'm volunteering with town planner Evan Lehrer, and I urge others to do also. Thank you.
Can I just, who was the other elected official? Who was the other elected official at the community listening session?
You don't, you don't know who those were?
Other than the two that were there, I didn't, I don't, I didn't see another elected official.
Oh, there were two others.
Participating?
Yes, yes, sitting at, one of them's sitting at my table.
Who was it?
Mary Leclair. She's elected.
Mm-hmm. Yep, you're right. My miss.
And there was another who's, I can't think of who that is now, but I know there was, because I looked around. Because there are people who are elected that are just not on the planning board or the select board. But all of us, I believe, really got a lot out of that, and I'm glad we did it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I look forward to May 14th.
You got it.
Thank you.
Arden Cadran? Arden Russell, sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I don't even know my own name sometimes, so it's okay. I'm here tonight to comment on the 532 Main Street proposal. I just learned when I came in that it's been continued, but I do feel I have some important information to share regarding that, so I'm going to say it during public comment. 532 Main Street is an 18-acre, undisturbed parcel of land which abuts Route 130 and Nicoletta's Way to the south, and just, it's a little bit north of Heritage Park. The applicant is seeking to subdivide that 18 acres into nine industrial and commercial building lots and build a new road to serve those lots, which will intersect and exit onto Route 130. When I first learned of the proposed subdivision two meetings ago, I was concerned about the possible curb cut onto Route 130, but then, as I did more research, I discovered the important environmental value of the parcel and realized there are actually many additional issues that need evaluation. As I said, 532 is an 18-acre, undisturbed, unfragmented forest and is therefore identified as a significant natural resource area. Unfragmented forests are important habitats for wildlife. The parcel is within the boundaries of the Mashpee Wildlife Refuge. The parcel is located in a sensitive watershed that discharges into the Mashpee River, which, as we all know, is currently a degraded water body due to nutrient overload. It is also a potential public water supply area. The parcel abuts Main Street, which is our regional roadway, carrying high volumes of traffic. Main Street is our gateway into the town of Mashpee. This proposal needs approval from the town for a curb cut onto Route 130. The select board has guidelines for approval for curb cuts. Guideline number 10 states no curb cut within 200 feet of another intersection. This proposal is within 150 feet of a very busy intersection and directly opposite another intersection. Additionally, there are a number of residential driveways also in close proximity to it and two additional intersections with heavy industrial traffic. The proposed curb cut will, will exit directly at the location where the bike path crosses from the east side to the west side of Route 130. This crosswalk is already currently nearly impossible to cross safely. For these reasons, an additional curb cut will create an unsafe situation on Mashpee's Main Street. Policy 10F recommends additional technical review by a consultant for curb cuts that generate more than 30 vehicle trips per day. This curb cut clearly will. When and by whom will this consultant review be initiated? The review should be conducted and the findings considered by the planning board prior to any approval of a subdivision road. Most importantly, the guidelines state that a permit will be granted if the proposed work is in the best interest of the town and its inhabitants. Approval of this subdivision with a curb cut onto Route 130 is definitely not in the community's best interest. And as if this wasn't enough, the property has a regulatory history that was not discussed or mentioned at the prior meeting. In 2002, 2.7 acres of this parcel were illegally clear cut. As such, there's a Cape Cod Commission Development of Regional Impact decision. This decision requires mitigation for the impacts of clear cutting 2.7 acres of land through preservation of four acres of open space. Based on my research, it is evident this preservation of open space was never completed. The DRI decision also states that a certificate of compliance from the Cape Cod Commission shall be obtained by the applicant prior to the sale or conveyance of any lots or prior to the issuance of any local permits. The parcel was conveyed in February of 2010 without a certificate of compliance. No further review of this request should be undertaken until this open space issue has been resolved. Every day in Mashpee, we talk about environmental protection, restoring our degraded waterways, nutrient overload, too much traffic, retaining our community character, yet, when an actual development proposal comes forward, we seem to forget that these are our priorities. Are we all talk and no action? Everyone wants to say the right thing, but not willing to do the right thing? This community cannot continue to talk about the severity of our degraded waterways while at the same time allowing additional development that negatively impacts and exacerbates the situation. Development proposals must be reviewed to determine if it is in the best interest of the town rather than the best interest of the developer's bank account. The facts of this proposal clearly speak for themselves. This subdivision should not be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it is 7:10, I'm going to open the public hearing. Continued from April 6th, 2022, Marcello Malagni Forestale Road LLC, 523 Main Street, MAP 26 Block, MAP 26 Block 6. The applicant requests consideration for approval of a nine-lot definitive subdivision plan of land consisting of approximately 18.05 acres located on Main Street, Route 130, between Nicoletta's Way and Echo Road. We have received correspondence from the applicant's attorney requesting a continuance until our meeting on May 18th.
Can you, can you please state the reason why?
The letter states, "As you know, we present, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that tonight's hearing be continued to May 18th to allow for continued discussions with the owners of the Nicoletta's Way regarding potential access for the proposed subdivision." It was requested by the board last hearing that the applicant have those discussions with the owners of Nicoletta's Way.
Okay, thank you.
There's a lot more things they have to correct. Are they aware about this?
Yes, I spoke with the applicant's attorney at length this afternoon relative to all of the issues cited by Ms. Cadran in her responses or in her comments to the board and others that I've made, I've acknowledged in my memo to the board relative to the proposal.
And the commission report that Arden spoke of is in your package.
And I've also had, spoken with commission staff in that regard as well, and when the public hearing reopens, should you accept the continuance, I'll deliver a thorough report regarding that, those conversations.
Okay, I make a motion to continue this public hearing to May 18th. Anything on the agenda?
No other public hearings.
7:10?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just want to state that we received revised plans and drainage calculations yesterday. I have not looked at the drainage calculations, but I have looked at the plans. It looks like the comments on the plans have been addressed. And I just want to state for the abutter's attention that the nearest road looking at Nicoletta's Way is over, it looks like a little over 200 feet away. Center line to center line, it's well over.
It's 253, center line to center line.
There you go.
Is that, is that considering Sturgis Lane?
So, I'm sorry?
Does that consider Sturgis Lane right across the street?
No.
No. So, just wanted to make that clarity about Nicoletta's Lane. I think that, if you weren't talking about that, I wasn't sure if you were, but they'll, they'll have to answer your letter.
So, Mr. Chair, I think there's a lot of interest in this. Sometimes when we have something like this of so much interest, we start a webpage. Do you think that would be okay?
Relatively easily accommodated, sure.
All right, thank you.
In the short staffed planning department?
I know, I feel bad.
Create a webpage?
We'll find time, don't worry.
It might be easier if you just post it all.
Yep. Do I need a motion to close the public hearing?
No, the public hearing stays open.
Okay, because we're continuing right now.
Right now.
All right, next on the agenda. New business, special permit modification decision approving the, oh, the pizza place.
Yes, no appeals were filed within the requisite 20-day appeal period, and thus, I am requesting the board sign the decision.
Excellent.
Two sheets left, John, just make sure I get them both back, please.
Yes, sir.
And I need the full board to sign.
Do we have this level of gentleman in finding and absence of our fire chief?
Did you say there were two pages we had to sign?
No, just the one page to sign. I just wanted to make sure I didn't lose a sheet.
Oh, I see.
Signing and absence of our.
Well, actually, I'm going to need Jack's signature on that because he voted on the petition prior to the closure of the appeal period. So, I'll obtain that from the now fire chief.
Procedurally, just my own knowledge, even though he's off, he can sign on that because it happened when he was active?
Well, he, he rendered a vote on the, on the application.
Every time does our planning board become a chief and can't be on the board anymore?
I don't think there's anything we're going to have to call you back for for a signature.
I look forward to it if so.
Okay, next, under new business, discussion relative to anticipated request for covenant relief, release for properties addressed at 17 Silverleaf Lane, John Rodericks.
Hey, I just wanted to preface the conversation really quick because I put this on the agenda with the chair's approval as a, an anticipated request for covenant release because this is the final remaining portion in the Conamette Highlands subdivision that needs to be completed for the entire subdivision to finally have a completed roadway system. And in my time as planner, I've never addressed any of this with the board. And with the new engineer, I wanted to discuss with you your expectations. I did have an opportunity to meet with Mr. Rodriguez onsite with, with Ed. We've reviewed the plans of record and discussed a plan of action moving forward. I just wanted to have Ed give his opinions to the board prior to giving guidance to Mr. Rodriguez relative to requesting the covenant release and assessing the projected security that he would need to submit to the board prior to beginning construction on the way for that covenant release.
So, should that come up to the front, just because sometimes it's hard to hear?
Yeah, if they're going to be speaking, they should.
You guys both mind coming up?
We've got the fan on. Trust me, back there, you can't, you can't hear. Hi.
Yep.
Either one. Ed?
Mr. Chairman, as Evan had said, I made a site visit, met Evan and Mr. Rodriguez out there. Mr. Rodriguez is on the right, his contractor Duke Perry is on the left. And we discussed what was there, what needs to be done in kind of a general scope. So, my initial starting position is let's make it safe and reasonable for the occupants of the, the, the road. He's trying to build a house on, on a, on a parcel that's now getting ready to be, to be, to apply for a building permit. So, I also have to be respectful and thoughtful of those people that aren't here yet and what they're going to end up with when, when the project's done. So, the project, the Silverleaf Road has been partially paved and part of the infrastructure has been installed. The 1972 plans that we were able to acquire aren't all that detailed, except for the Land Court Plan that shows the lot layouts. But we agreed in the field that there's some additional thoughts and investigation that probably should be done. It just so happens that Mr. Rodriguez's surveyor actually did some investigations, additional field investigation today, and on the way to the, to the hearing tonight, I met them at 6:30 out on the site, and we found an additional pair of catch basins that were buried and filled with dirt. Okay? So, what my position is and my recommendation to the board is there's an area of the road that's never been paved, and that I believe that that area is in front of the lot in question. And Mr. Rodriguez has agreed to pave the road in front of his lot, which is almost, it's, it's virtually 80% of what's left to be done. So, from the edge of his lot to Old Sandwich Road is another, maybe 70, 60?
100 feet.
100 feet?
If there.
Yeah. And there are already a pair of catch basins there that aren't buried. Now, I found another set between the edge of his lot and Sandwich Road and what Mr. Rodriguez has agreed, at least, you know, in general to do, we haven't prepared any specifics yet, is, first of all, the road will be scarified, rebuilt, so that the base would be, be, be prepared for new asphalt. There's some broken up and partially, you know, installed binder course there. So, we'd have to excavate down at least three and a half inches so that we put two inches of binder, inch and a half of top. He's agreed to do all of that and to tie in an adjacent road, Balfour. Is it road or street?
Lane.
Lane, thank you. Balfour Lane, there's a, there's an existing pavement seam there. He'd go to that seam, so the transition around the corner, and then go down to the end of his property. So, he's agreed to do all that. Prior to that, we decided that we should add, we should, we should at least augment the drainage that's there. Tonight, we found two more catch basins. Well, great, that's super. We found catch basins that are probably old leaching catch basins like they did in the olden days, and I felt that that probably is not adequate, and that they've agreed to open them up and clean them all out so we can see what is there. And then I suggested that we put an overflow pipe and some additional leaching capacity off of each one of these catch bases. So, there's two existing catch basins where we have agreed in general to provide some additional leaching capacity, a leaching pit with stone around it. And then there's a existing, there's an existing catch basin opposite his property near Balfour that doesn't have a companion catch basin on his side of Silverleaf Lane, and Mr. Rodriguez has agreed to add a catch basin there again with an overflow leach pit to provide some capacity. So, we're providing some containment, some treatment, and so on. It's a, it's a blend of the old code and the new code with some better capacity so that that road functions better for drainage, and we're not creating a position or condition where after it's paved, we're going to have all this runoff down at the bottom of the hill and hurting those other two people that live at the end of the hill. So, I don't want that to happen either. So, this is a way to, I think, a decent compromise to provide some additional drainage capacity to repair the road to the frontage that he owns and get closer to finishing the whole project, really. Now, we've agreed to, to do some more investigation, talk about it in the field, and he's agreed to have it written up or drawn up so we can take a look at a plan and have an engineer stamp the plan. I will certainly help them with that, guide them on what my expectations are. We talked about the inspections I would require. I don't think there's any issue here.
I think, one thing I wanted to make sure I discussed with you all in anticipation of the request is the level of detail on, on a plan. I'm assuming the board is going to want to see an engineered stamped plan for your review and consideration and Ed's approval prior to releasing the covenant, and I just wanted to make sure I had, I made that assumption correctly so we could offer clear guidance to Mr. Rodriguez.
All right, this, I go back a lot of times with this.
Dennis is.
A lot of times we made that lot going like 100 feet past.
Right, exactly, right.
To, to try to finish off the street, but definitely you got to bring the, all the drainage up, at least around his lot, up to standards and stuff, because that's what was always a thing.
Right.
But, see, there was a lot behind you, the extra 100 feet.
It's a lot in the corner.
They're the two lots with frontage on South Sandwich Road at the end of Silverleaf Lane.
There's one lot behind one of those corner lots, at South Sandwich Road, that fronts on Balfour as well. So, there's a, there's one vacant lot there.
So, if you bring this, all the septic, I mean, the drainage system up to standards, and the Balfour, and so, I'd be fine with that, but we used to make them go a little even a little further, try to get this done, and it's like, since it's only one lot, I'd say, okay, we're going to do it, but if it was like two lot, I would make them finish the whole street up. That's how we used to do it. And even I was secretary when this was going on. Every time we had to come, try to get an extra 100 feet up, because it was always one lot here, no drainage, and then when they put the drainage in, then that neck got all filled up, and we had to make that poor guy fix the drainage, you know? But, all right, so it's only one lot?
He is, he is going to upgrade the catch basins that we discovered today that are off his lot, they're not in front of his lot. So, they're down, they're downstream from his lot and in front of the other parcels, but it helps everybody. It helps, it helps part of his lot, it helps the other people. So, it, it's, it's, I think, a reasonable compromise. Mr. Rodriguez, if you decide you want to go another 20 feet of pavement, so much the better, you know, to continue the, the road, but we'll talk about it.
So, there's still going to be some part of the road leading to South Sandwich that won't be done?
Yes.
And, and it probably will never be done?
No, there are two lots, two buildable lots left.
Oh, okay.
One in front of the basins that I'm going to try to bring up to grade and one down, entirely down at the end of, the end of the street, which, as Dennis is familiar with the history there, and we go, we go back to handle with one.
So, there's, there's hope.
I was looking at you. He looks familiar.
It's a very minimal amount of, of roadway that would be left unfinished.
Right.
It's very insubstantial in consideration of what Mr. Rodriguez is proposing.
Yeah.
However, if there are two unbuildable lots that would still be, or buildable lots that would be subject to the covenant, then yes, you'd have another stab at it.
Where's the second buildable lot? I know what the one you're talking about at the corner of Balfour, where's the second one?
The second one is on the corner of Fox Hill.
Oh, at the top of the hill?
Oh, that's at the top of the hill. So, no, we wouldn't have an opportunity at the bottom.
That's right, that's right. It is already paved there, and there's already drainage there, but it is an unbuildable, excuse me, a vacant lot. You're right.
I think, in fact, you just released the covenant on that lot a few weeks ago.
Yeah, they will be applying for a release of covenant on that property, I'm sure.
I think they already did.
I think they did.
They already did, but there's still one lot that needs a release, so we'll ask
them at that time.
Oh, they already did at the top of Fox Hill?
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago.
And, yeah, because I.
It was a smaller lot.
Going back 20 years, she refused to chip in anything far the streets and said she wouldn't, she'd say, "When you builders are all through in here, then I'll just sell my lot." Now, 20, 25 years has gone by, and we're still dealing with the same situation there. So, I feel that, you know, she can contribute to finishing.
Yeah.
The end of the street along with the other vacant lot that sits in front of those other two drains we discovered.
Okay.
I mean, it's fair.
I'm fine with it. Ed is, is suggesting.
Yeah.
I do think you should need, you do need an engineered plan.
With a stamp on it.
With a stamp on it.
So.
Which is what you're suggesting?
Correct, correct. I asked them to consider that, and I'll, I'll work with their, their team to, to let them know what I would accept. I'm not going to make them do drainage analysis in the whole street or anything. We saw that where the catch basins used to be or where they should have been. We agreed that, okay, this will handle this flow going in here, let's, let's add some capacity for emergencies. I can't imagine the bottom of the hill is pretty after a big storm.
Right.
Okay, so let's help that whole situation, and then the people that live there at the bottom of the hill, they'll, they'll get something that they didn't know existed.
Good.
Some help.
You said there was a binder coat there now?
There's a binder coat over, over the part in front of his, majority of front of his lot, yes.
All right, so.
It's broken up, it's not perfect.
Are you going to take any courses? Are you going to take any courses?
We're going to take it all out. So we're going to take it off, because it's sitting there. Now, I want to put new binder, and I want to make sure that the, we're going to take it down. You know, he could pull out, you know, four, six inches, something like that out, so pull that out. I don't mind if he reuses it as a part of the base, but he's got to put down new binder. And the binder is sitting right next to the finish on the other side. So I got to have him cut down at least three and a half inches to go back. So he put down, and then checked the binder. Excuse me, checked the gravel base. The gravel base should be fine, as far as it's been sitting there for however long. We just got to shape it, recompact it, get it ready, prep it for paving.
Okay.
I asked him that he would do some compaction testing for it, and he agreed. So we'll do it like we would normally do our normal subdivision.
I have full faith in you, Ed. This will be good.
Before this comes back to you as well, Mr. Rodriguez provided my office with an initial cost estimate that I gave to Ed. I think it'll need to be modified in consideration of the changes to the drainage. So when we do, when Ed has some clarity around, and Mr. Rodriguez has clarity around what the details on the plan should show, and we received that plan, and Ed has reviewed a cost estimate in consideration of the scope that he's suggesting, it'd be my suggestion to Mr. Rodriguez to formally request the release of the covenant. And it'll be back before you at that time. And you can, at that time, you would consider the amount for performance bond that we would hold so you can release the covenant.
Right. And I asked him, let's agree not to do anything on the road until all the trucks go in and out of there with the foundation, all the work. Let's do it after they're done, and everybody is on the same page.
Got it.
Good.
All right.
In the meantime, we're going to unearth a couple of catch basins, and they'll function a little better than they ever were. Perfect.
Dennis is familiar with that, because they're in the same shape as what we ran into on Candlewood Lane. Remember, and you went down and you inspected those as a matter of fact, back in that day.
You can inspect these too.
You are the catch basin king.
He knows that.
Oh, yeah.
The carnage there. They're all filled up and everything.
All right, good plan. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, John, Ed and I will be in touch with you.
Now, will they have to come back, or should we just authorize the town planner and engineer to? Is that okay?
That's fine.
I make a motion that we authorize the town planner and the town engineer to work with...
Mr. Rodriguez.
John Rodriguez.
John Rodriguez, to get a plan for that covenant release. Oh, and we'll have to, oh, they'll have to come back for the covenant.
They will.
Okay, all right. I tried to save the stuff.
Try.
But thank you for coming ahead of time.
Thank you.
It's very helpful.
Thank you, Dennis, for remembering.
He can't remember what he had for breakfast, but he can remember twenty years ago.
I get married, wouldn't mind if you get one. Hi, hon.
Okay, next, old business status of local comprehensive plan update with Weston and Sampson. And we've got Caroline and Blake. Hello.
Hi.
Hi, Caroline.
Hello.
Yep.
Okay, great. So Ashley is away at the National Planning Conference, so she's not with us this week. I have Blake Martin. He is part of our senior leadership, and he's also the principal in charge for this project. You may see Blake more and more too as we talk about water quality in some of our sessions. So just to give you a quick update, if I can, unless Evan wants to say something first.
Well, I'll try and get started, Caroline, just a little bit. I spoke with Caroline and Blake this morning regarding the status of the plan and kind of the goals achieved and next steps. Obviously, we want to continue to make everyone aware that our next workshop is on May 14th. We are planning on holding this at the library and not at the high school. I felt that the high school had some, a number of acoustical challenges that were somewhat difficult to manage the day, and we can mitigate those challenges by meeting in a more intimate space. I did go to the library today to meet with the library director to make sure that we would not run into any potential capacity challenges. So Caroline and Ashley, when she is back, we still need to continue discussing and going through the overall program for the day. But again, this workshop is focused on community systems. Again, thereafter, we'll have workshops on natural and built systems prior to our finals, you know, large event where we workshop a draft of the proposal in August. What else did we discuss, Caroline? I want to make sure I capture everything here.
Time, same time, ten to one, ten to...
I noticed on the webpage, actually, we had eleven. I wasn't sure if that was in error, Caroline. Are we still planning ten to one?
Well, we had eleven to one as our original schedule. We can move back to ten to one if you would like.
Board, you want more time?
I think ten to one is better.
Yes.
Ten to one, so it would be May 14th, library, ten to one. Just like with the former workshop, once we have a clear program for the day, I'll do another, like, PSA. The information will be on planmashp.com. We did get a number of additional signups from town meeting, which was nice.
Good.
We anticipate on, I'm working with other town staff to get a mailer sent to residences in the town. We had most of our website traffic coming from direct lookups and from Facebook referrals. So we want to try and drive additional traffic via direct engagement via mailer. What other items did we discuss? Caroline, help me out here. I'm drawing a blank on the rest of our conversation.
Sure. So I just want to go jump back to the May 14th, community systems concept, just so, like, just so you're listening, you have awareness of what that actually involves. Community systems are really about the social activities and the qualities of Mashpee. That can include things like your local economy, the cost of living. But what it focuses on is just how, all of the things that people need to live. So that could be your social network, that could be housing, it could be social services, economic development agencies, like your chamber. It can also be cultural and preservation activities and networks that pull people together. So, and also even recreation and open space. So this is a really broad brush. So the conversation that we'll have on community systems really is very people focused. And so that's the conversation we're going to try and get to, are the goals and actions that, what people need in the broad sense to live well, to promote quality of life in Mashpee. So the Cape Cod Commission has a similar definition, and they're looking at it from a regional perspective. But we're trying to look, obviously, at the hyperlocal perspective and really kind of get the things that might have fallen through the cracks at the regional level. So that's the May 14th. Just to recap on the April 9th workshop, all of the results are tallied and grouped. They have been posted online. And we also sent out an email newsletter yesterday where you can find links to that. As Evan said, we did get a boost in online subscriptions. We have about 250 people subscribed, but obviously, in a town of Mashpee size, we really could use a lot more. So if you can use your Facebook, your personal connections to spread the word, that would be fantastic.
Caroline, do we have, do we have a Facebook page for this?
We don't have an independent Facebook account for the comprehensive plan. We've been utilizing the town's account to, and the police department's account to...
Because they have a broader reach, enough we just start a new one.
Right, so we're generating, we're generating graphics for other people's Facebook pages. So feel free to grab that and go. And let me just look at my list, because we've got a lot of things. Oh, so coming out of that workshop, we do want to look at the existing vision statement from the 1998 plan. I'm going to ask, and this is a question for you. Normally, we would draft, we would draft a revised vision statement and then hand it over to you for comments or edits. Is that the preferred method, or would you rather save that for a group discussion?
I think that needs to be a group discussion, Caroline. I mean, we have this meeting coming up on the 14th. There's nothing in our packet to review. I don't know if you had a chance to listen to our last planning board meeting, Caroline? And Blake? Did you? No?
I did not watch it.
Okay, you need to watch it. There were some things that we went over. It's very, very important that you listen to what happened. I was promised that we would have materials to review beforehand so that, so that the things that happened before wouldn't happen again. I don't know how to express how I'm feeling right now and how I feel I haven't been listened to and how the residents of Mashpee have not been listened to. I mean, this spilled over into the planning, the board of selectmen meeting. It took up over an hour of our last meeting. And it was some really critical stuff that happened at our last planning board meeting. I don't think that anybody can participate from outside of Mashpee without watching that planning board meeting and that the board of selectmen meeting. It really touched into the heart and soul of this town, and we really made some progress as a group. And I don't, I mean, today is the fourth. We have our next big meeting in ten days, and I don't have any materials to look at.
I understand.
And review. I mean, this made the regional newspaper. Did you read the Cape Cod Times article? I mean, this was like big news here on the Cape. I don't want to have to repeat it, but something really big happened. And, I mean, I'm not seeing a map here that's got changed.
So how can we, how can we see, how can we get this stuff before?
I understand Mary's point. Caroline, what, we did, and we discussed this, Caroline and Blake and myself. We do, are committing to making sure the planning board vets all of the materials. And I'm realizing now that we do not have a completed program yet for the community systems workshop, and thus, we haven't had completed materials generated for that workshop, which is why they're not here. It's not an intent on a repetition of our first workshop. It's that we have not had the time and capacity to generate them. So the question for the board is, May 14th is the currently scheduled timeline for the next workshop. Your meeting is on May 18th. We could consider a special meeting before the May 14th meeting to review any of those materials, or we could consider an alternate date for the community systems workshop.
Maybe we should bump it to June 11th.
So that's the discussion.
I mean, you have the date of June 11th.
Well, what is the advertising right now? What is, where are the dates?
What have people been told?
We have not blasted anything out yet, with the exception of the newsletter. The newsletter did go out with the May 14th date.
You can easily adjust that if needed.
Edit is posted online. I will say that, and I, you know, if you want to move it, that's certainly fine with me. But this is more of a listening session for key stakeholders. So it's not like we're, unlike the visioning session where we're, you know, at least setting the table. This is really about gathering. So I don't really anticipate much in the way of a lot of material for you to review.
I'm like physically shaking.
Really about hearing.
How can you have a listening session if you're not listening to the town? I mean, our last meeting, you should have watched it several times. I am physically shaking. I am so upset. I can't even believe this.
I wasn't at the meeting, but when I was at the planning board meeting, it acted like you didn't even listen to none of people. And then you come here tonight and act like nothing happened, just move along. And you didn't even listen to us to tell you what we wanted you to do about the, you know, looking at the old plan, new plan, and changing the map, and putting the tribal parts on the map. And you just, not listening to the people. You know, I mean, you should look at what Mary said that, the video, and then you can see, oh, how we're going to react. I mean, you came here like, hey, like, nothing happened, and let's move along, and here's what we're going to do. That's it. I didn't go to the meeting, and I'm glad I didn't, because I thought I'd be going to real mad at the meeting. So I'm going to leave like that. You're not listening.
I don't...
Evan, I think we need to hear from you.
We did make a lot of progress at our last meeting. I walked away from that meeting feeling motivated, inspired, that we can fulfill and conduct a process that is thoughtful, is thorough, and is in consideration of best practice. I don't think it's a fair consideration of our consultants, and I understand your position, Mary, I do. I've had thoughtful conversations with them, and there's no intent, or in, you know, my staff level meetings, there should not be any perception that they're not listening. So what I want to make sure we have clarity on is how can we demonstrate that we're not listening?
Evan, if they're not listening, who is not listening? Because somebody is not listening.
Mary, again.
Okay.
The document...
So who's not listening? Is it staff, consultant, the people? Who is not listening?
Remember, the issue you've identified is that we have a meeting on the 14th prior to...
No, the issue that I identified in our last meeting was that what happened at the kickoff was unacceptable. And I listed the several reasons. You sat there.
I did, I was there.
I'm looking at this packet and this presentation, and it looks as though nobody has changed course. Nobody has made any change to correct those. So tell me, tell me, how are we going to change based on what happened at our last planning board meeting?
I want to make very, very clear.
No, I just want you to go to action step. I get it.
Let him finish. Go ahead, Evan.
The first thing we did after the meeting is, an accomplishment we've noted is production of our map series that is on the Plan Mashpee website.
Okay, can we pull that up?
I can.
Good, that should really be in our packet, Evan. I'm sorry.
Well, it's online.
Well, that's not good enough. It needs to be in our official public packet that's loaded up to our website so people can see it.
Well, they can see it because it's online.
No, it's not in our packet.
It's online.
Yeah, so is in Amazon, but that's not in our packet.
It went out with the newsletter.
That's not in our packet.
It's online.
It's not in our packet, John.
It's not, it's online.
That's right, so it's not part of our public packet.
It's online.
Yep, and so isn't your address and everybody else's, but it's not part of our public packet.
I just want to point out...
It's part of the website.
The documents you have in your packet are just a rehash of the first workshop. So what we have here are each of the mapping series.
Which are on the official planning website.
The number one takeaway that we had was that we...
Okay, so where's the map that shows the Native American resources that we discussed?
You'll see each of these layers has a pink layer on it. That is the Wampanoag reservation boundaries, each of these maps. Pink, 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 those are the layers. We've included them on every single map.
And are they going to be, are they going to be used in our, I'm looking for the materials that are going to be used in our next workshop.
And so that's what I was getting at, that we have not produced those materials yet because we don't have a program, and that's the issue that we need to rectify now. We have heard you loud and clear, and this is not an issue. We are interested in having persist. We want to correct this. I, Evan, did not consider the fact that we scheduled May 14th, and we didn't have a meeting until May 18th, and thus, you would not have the opportunity, unless we schedule an alternative meeting, to scrutinize any materials that would be produced for that day. That is not Weston and Sampson's fault, that's Evan Laras' fault.
So did you, did you tell them about the meeting from last time?
Yes.
And did you encourage them to watch it?
I did not use those words. I just discussed the meeting with them in detail.
Do I have to go to Rodney for that? I mean, that's really, I'm talking to him.
Evan's job, Evan's job is to deal with the consultants. If he explained to them...
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
No.
Yes, it is.
No, excuse me.
Yes, it is.
Let's use some decorum, please, especially my last day. Let's, we just talk normal on my last day. I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Can I have an answer to that question?
Evan, please, finish.
Could you repeat the question, please?
When are the consultants going to watch that meeting? It's really important that they do.
I am, you know, I can't speak for them, Mary, but I have spoken in detail with every member, including senior leadership of Weston and Sampson, relative to the issues of the day.
So can we get a commitment from them to watch it?
None of them are ignorant to the realities of what occurred and people's feelings on the day. So to characterize otherwise is not fair.
No, I'm not, I'm not. That's not, I'm going to an action step.
Caroline, could you make sure before our next workshop that you and Ashley watch our last planning board meeting?
Can you lose them?
Thank you.
Evan, can I say something here?
Is she saying yes?
She said yes.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes.
Maybe you can step in a little bit. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
We're very concerned that we hear everything that you say. This is very important to us. Mashpee has been a town in which we've spent years and years and years of doing work here. We're very familiar with David Weedon, we're planning on meeting with him independently to hear what he has to say and to make sure that his, his needs are met. We talked to Tom, spent an hour and a half talking to Tom on my way home from Albany last week. So we got a gist of some of the issues that were raised. We watched the Board of Selectmen meeting, saw, saw those issues raised, understand the tensions that were there. There, there isn't any intent for us not to listen to anybody. We are committed to making sure that the, any type of survey you see first, any type of interaction with the public is vetted with you folks first. There's a bit of a matter of timing. We can't produce materials for the next meeting overnight. And if it is a listening session, the materials may only be an agenda and, and an outline to inform what's going to happen at that May 14th meeting. And again, we will follow your direction relative to schedule, relative to materials out in the public. We instantly tried to fix the map that was just a locust map. It had no intent of excluding any lands or any areas within Mashpee. We fixed the one on the website. And, Mary, I, we're, we're doing everything that we can to hear what everyone has to say in Mashpee that wants to have a voice. That, that's the whole goal of this. That's why we asked to, to do this project with you. And, and I think we need to move towards working together and at any point in time, Mary, if you want to call me, I'll be glad to listen. If you don't think any of my staff or anyone at Weston and Sampson is listening, my number's 617-899-6194. Mary, I'd be glad to talk with you.
I greatly appreciate that because the, the rest of your staff has not been willing to talk to me.
Is to go to our contact and Evan has assured us that he's given us the feel for all of the concerns that were brought up and have been brought up, including the last Planning Board. We talked exhaustively about what happened and where you want to go. And we hope to meet that goal of where you want to go. It's, if there's no malintent here, so Mary, I want to let you know that we are available to listen here and produce documents as you see fit, as we can do our best to produce in a timely fashion. But we, we need some space. If you need some kind of material developed, we need a little time to do it.
Absolutely. I, I, Mr. Martin?
On that front with some level of understanding that we don't, we're not, we don't have malintent here.
Okay, you've said that three times. I think that we made progress. Thank you very much.
So what do we need to see before the 14th? We need to see an agenda.
All the materials that's gonna be passed out.
Let me finish. Anything that's gonna be passed out, although Blake said there's not gonna be much if it's a listening session, but anything that's gonna be present, we should see ahead of time. I guess the question for the, for the Board is, do we have time between, or question to the consultants, do we have time between now and the 14th or do we need to move the 14th? I'd prefer not to move the 14th?
I'd prefer to move it just so that we have time.
I don't know if we have to. I'd like to hear from Evan and the consultants.
My number one goal is that the process is functional. That's my number one goal. I am looking to the Board for direction here because I have no intention on facilitating a process that is dysfunctional. Now, with that being said, do I think it is absolutely critical we move the meeting? I don't, I don't, but I'm not you. I'm not the body here. I don't want to remove the ability of the forward momentum of the process. I don't want to lose the ability to carry through on the progress we have made. So what I might suggest is to get a, relatively quickly ascertain what the needs of the day will be.
Right.
And the question, I guess, for the Board is, do these materials, in your opinion, need to be reviewed in a public meeting or can I provide them to you in an email for you to respond to me?
No, that was my question, actually, because I thought this was going to be a similar meeting to the first. So what I'm learning today, what I'm learning today is that it's more gonna be informational, so it's more being spoken to about bullet points that they want to address and ask questions to the group. So that being said, does that need to be pushed off? I want to do it right, so do we need to push that point off?
This workshop is not gonna have large maps and large format printouts and things like that on the tables because it's not a visioning session. It's, it's different. So again, I want a functional process. I have been committed to that from the very beginning. I have no interest in, in, in losing sight of the end goal here. There's a lot of work to do and we have multiple engagement opportunities and workshops throughout the summer and we have some flexibility in our timeline, but I don't want to miss the momentum. So I'm, I'm really looking to the Board here for guidance. That's it.
Well, we can't, we, we can't discuss it unless we're in public session.
I just mean respond to, to staff with your, with your thoughts to give me the, the okay, Evan, this meets our expectations.
So for the agenda and any corresponding material?
Where things have, where, things are still not in printed form going in the right direction. I think we should have a public meeting.
About the agenda and the materials for the.
And to review these materials. Yeah, I do.
To review the materials for the next listening session?
I don't even have them in front of me. I don't even know what they're gonna be.
I'm asking, asking a clarifying question. You want a public session to review the agenda and the materials to be presented at the next listening session?
Yes.
I'm looking at the Board here.
That sounds like a good idea.
I haven't even got a calendar.
The public's gonna come, but if we don't know what we're gonna be looking for, we could be all over the field.
Well, can we still get to the public in the mailer or, you know?
Well, here's, again, maybe we ought to have a conversation on, because we, I know with clarity, as we've discussed, that things like surveys, large format materials, those items need to be vetted by the Board prior to.
Right.
What's the threshold for review?
Everything at this point. I mean, really, really, this place could have imploded.
Yeah, like.
You know, we got us back on track. If we have, if our next session has a faux pas again, it, it, I mean, I don't know what's gonna happen.
I, I, I wholeheartedly intend and want to avoid faux pas.
Faux pas.
Or implosions. We don't want implosions.
We could get together, it'd probably take an hour, between 30 minutes and an hour.
Yeah, can we do a special?
Yeah, oh yeah. We're gonna have to do a special meeting.
So we can get it done on a timely fashion at the same time, what you're saying?
Well, how much time does Weston and Sampson need to put this stuff together? Let's start there.
Blake and Caroline, what do you reckon a turnaround time is for us to discuss the program for the day and produce the necessary materials?
I can't recognize.
I couldn't hear the question, Evan. Say again?
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm wondering if you have any thoughts as to what a reasonable turnaround time would be for us to confer relative to the day's program and the production of any draft materials for review? Is there an opportunity for us to produce those before, with enough time to hold a special meeting for the Board to review those materials or do we need to consider moving the May 14th date?
Good question.
If you, a draft this Friday and you could give us some feedback on that and then put it out to the Board at, at any time you want next week.
Maybe, if we get it on Friday, we could get our endpoint an email to him and then potentially next week have a special meeting.
Have a special meeting next Wednesday?
So, Mr. Chairman, in my meetings with Evan, we've talked about two things that would be very useful. Copies of the old plan, because people had asked for that and Evan had said yes and we could get them in the library and have the survey. And Evan and I talked about how you all have to approve the survey, but the more meetings we have without the survey, then we're sort of backtracking.
We haven't seen, there's only one survey at this point, right?
So I, I'm just saying that those are two things that people discussed before, which we've all agreed we're gonna do, so we should have those for the next meeting.
So I, I want to figure out this question first because I have other updates that I want to get to, that get to those points.
Right. So can we have a, if, if we get the materials by Friday, we review them, get you comments back by Monday, we have a special meeting next Wednesday?
I can't.
Thursday, we don't have to be on Wednesday, do we?
I need 48 hours to post an agenda. I'm available anytime you want to meet.
You're complete.
Thursday.
Oh, I'm not part of it. Okay, go. I'm definitely free. I'm definitely.
Thursday?
And it doesn't have to be in the evening, folks.
I forgot.
We're just here to review materials. We can post this at any time during business hours.
I can take time off Thursday morning or Wednesday morning.
Uh, I can, hold on just a second.
Dennis, call your boss, I gotta figure him come up.
Dennis, what do you think?
How about you, Robert? Are you available?
Correct.
I probably am.
Wednesday or Thursday morning?
I can do either Wednesday or Thursday morning.
Like nine-ish?
So should I not, no, honestly, should I not make comments on this on Fridays? Because I'm not gonna be.
No, we want your comments, Joseph. We definitely.
I don't know, I've never stepped off a board.
No, you're still, until Saturday at sometime in the evening.
At 6:00 PM, a fiery email's gonna come out for me.
There might be a thousand people.
Campaign and you could win.
There might be a thousand people that will do a write-in call.
So it's either, I guess Wednesday or Thursday morning.
Can I just have time to review the calendar tomorrow and get availability of space and I'll let you know what it is?
Either day, nine to, nine to 10.
All right. So we are going to hold a special meeting to review materials next week. We will proceed with the May 14th date.
Yes.
Right. The next thing I want to discuss with you all that kind of pertains to all of this and this gets to a comment Mary made at either last meeting or the meeting before is, when does the Board have an opportunity to have a work session relative to the existing conditions chapters and the rest of the process? We want to schedule that. My thought was our first meeting in June to do that. And our, in addition to having the work session relative to existing conditions chapters, our anticipation, we're anticipating also producing all of the draft surveys with a draft schedule for the release of those surveys for your review and scrutiny.
Beautiful. Let's do that the first, June 1st.
At the first meeting in June?
Yeah.
Is that June 1?
June 1.
And Caroline, did you hear that? I think that's what we had discussed.
That's good.
I think that's the entirety of my update. Mary, I'm, I'm sorry that I, I didn't, I didn't anticipate the issue with the materials I did provide. We hear you loud and clear. This is not gonna be an issue moving forward. I should have thought about the scheduling error and that's my bad.
Can you, can you update everybody on what's available online? Yes.
So remember, we got cut, our phone call today got cut off. Do you know what I mean? Like when we were talking, I, I had to get off the phone and that was the next thing that we were gonna talk about. So you don't have to say sorry. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, we're all good now.
What, because I noticed in the newsletter, which actually was, was really well done, the newsletter that went out yesterday, thank you, that was very helpful. The links are helpful. You can go on and see survey results, you can go on and see the maps. How much of what was asked for, to Lynn's point, the, the, the existing plan, the updated maps, how much of that is available online now?
So, well, the 1998 comprehensive plan is available in its entirety on the website.
Okay.
What Lynn was referring to is some folks still like to review the documents on the computer and I said I could have some copies printed and available to the library, which I'll make sure happens. One thing that I did commit to at our last meeting was a thorough review of the 1998 action plans of each element. I am underway preparing those documents. It's going, it's a relatively heavy lift. I've already made my department head, fellow department heads aware that I'm gonna need to sit down with them and conduct relatively thorough interviews with them to go through records and ascertain what was accomplished and what was not, but it is underway.
Okay.
I would like to, I'm planning on having relatively completed drafts of those assessments also on that June 1st meeting. I am confident they won't be 100% complete, but my focus right now is on the transportation element, the coastal resources element.
Wait, go flub.
The transportation element.
Yeah.
Coastal resources element, open space plan, housing production plan, but really the, it's the, it's the chapters that are significant in scope of their action plans.
That haven't been updated.
That, that have not been updated and require much more attention than something like the human services chapter, which is relatively simple to ascertain. So those are my immediate focuses and what I'm gonna intend on having relatively completed for your review and for the community's consumption by the end of the month. So that's well underway.
Can we do all four of those topics in one night on June 1st? I mean, that's, that's a lot.
The black guys.
Shut up.
Is that what you're suggesting?
I'm not necessarily suggesting we go. I'm just suggesting I provide you with the assessments of what was accomplished and what was not from the goals, policies and actions of the 1998 plan by then.
Right.
That gives me a month to do a very, very large amount of work.
That, yeah, right. And, and when we have our session on June 1st, what's that gonna cover?
Good question. We do need to review the existing conditions chapters. It's probably prudent that we do break them, break them down into logical categories.
Okay.
I don't know if Caroline or, or any other Weston and Sampson staff have thoughts in their regard to what we, our working sessions. We've only identified we, it's a priority for us to move forward with them, but we haven't discussed the agendas.
Should we start that meeting on the 1st at 6?
Caroline, I can't hear you.
Oh, go ahead, Caroline.
Sorry, I had, I had my phone on mute. On those work session meetings, I, it would be good if everybody came to that session having already read and commented on the existing conditions because there's a point in the process where we're not looking backward anymore, right? We're looking forward. And I think it would be helpful in those work sessions if, if everybody came kind of digested already the existing conditions, you know, what we've already kind of been through a second or third round of edits on that. Because you could, that could suck away a lot of time and it doesn't get you anything towards your, your future plan. So I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say is that, you know, these work sessions should really be about the work going forward, if we could do that.
So our homework is, our homework is to review the existing.
Again, I've only received comments from one Board member from the existing conditions chapters, so I will resend them to you and urge you to reply.
Yes. And so back to my original question, it sounds like the June 1st meeting is gonna be potentially lengthy. Should we start that at 6?
Up to the Board.
Can you do 6?
Yeah.
Can you do 6? Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, no problem.
Just to give us enough time. Yeah, thank you, Joe.
Should, should we match that with the chapters that fall under community systems? Because we will have our listening session on community systems, May 14th.
14th.
So that will be fresh in our minds.
Well, the thing about the community systems is that they touch on so many of the elements of the comprehensive plan. That's kind of one thing. They really are so intersectional that it's gonna be hard to isolate any one, any particular one. I think I would focus on the elements that are most substantial in scope upfront.
Okay.
I.e. the ones I noted before.
Most substantial and have not been updated.
Yes.
Since 98.
We're not gonna warm up. We're gonna go right for the.
I mean, I just feel like in consideration of time, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And are you going?
Maybe can.
There's a lot in there, Dennis.
So if you haven't gone to the website in the last couple of days, you should, because all the information from the first session is there, the maps are there, the survey results are there, you know, up through, I think it was March 3rd or some, uh, May 3rd, something like that. So there's some pretty good information out there.
So remind me again, what are the, what are the, the chapters from the old?
That I'm prioritizing? Transportation, coastal resources, and the open space and rec plan are the most significant in their scope and scale. Kind of subsequent to that is housing, economic development, public facilities, municipal facilities, and public safety are kind of lumped together. And then the heritage preservation chapter won't alter all that much, nor would the human services. I might, energy, we're missing energy, and that would kind of be a mid-tier priority as well.
All right, so that's every single one. Okay.
The first big four, the first big three?
Transportation.
The first three are the biggest lift, and I'm focusing on just because they are gonna take so much time to go.
And that's what we'll do on June 1st.
That's my goal.
Do you wanna like take pick two that you think you're gonna get to and probably won't?
I'm focusing on those three with the, with every intent on having a substantial enough draft where we can ascertain enough of what was accomplished and then with the goal of having them thoroughly completed.
Okay, good.
This is a project I'm passing on to my intern when he gets started in June.
Excellent.
He's gonna help you.
Correct.
Transportation, coastal.
The open space and rec plan.
Open, open space.
Those are the three largest, most substantial documents that need my attention.
So, so next steps, immediate next steps, stuff for the 14th, we'll see a draft up by Friday, we get you comments by Monday, we've got a meeting either Wednesday or Thursday at 9:00 in the morning.
Got it.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else there, Ed?
Say it again, Joe.
Anything else there, buddy?
Uh, just, yeah, getting through my heart palpitations. I'm just inspired and focused on the next steps, folks, you know?
Caroline or Blake, anything else?
No, nothing else from us. I mean, going, basically from now through the end of July or August, it's, it's every week something's going to be happening. Like, so, you know, we have a more granular work plan for the next couple of months. So as we refine that, I think that we need to keep, you know, keep communication lines open, because it's gonna, it's gonna be quite a ride.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, may I have a one say? Evan, this is more directed, Monday we have a town meeting, and one of the warrant articles was affirmation, affirming that the town's center is located in this general vicinity. Could you address that on the large maps as identifying this area as the town's center?
One of the maps produces actually the town's overlays, and one of the overlays is the Mashpee Town Center overlay district, but we can put, make sure that there's a.
Little arrows.
A bar.
This is it.
Whatever. If, yes, we can do that.
Okay, thanks.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I don't have a report other than to thank Joe for his service to the board.
Thank you all for dealing with me all three years, helping me, teaching me. Thank you to the citizens for allowing me to learn from you guys, and I appreciate it. And good luck with the LCP. I'll be cheering you on.
Hey, stay, stay involved. Stay involved.
That's right.
I'll be sitting next to you, Lynn.
Okay, town planner report.
This election on Saturday. I have.
Evan?
Three updates, one of which I'm gonna start with first, which is the cottage court zoning. Willabend, who is an attendance tonight, has provided me with some updated graphics and for your review and scrutiny. I've had some communications with Willabend relative to the proposal, and I feel at this juncture I have a relatively strong grasp of the dimensional criteria that would need to apply to a project like this. I've reviewed best practice for cottage court, typologies. I feel like with a little bit of dialogue from Willabend, with you, I'd be prepared, I hope, given the workload, I'm assuming that a draft that's ready for your scrutiny could be made available in the next meeting or two. And that's essentially the update at this juncture. I don't know if the chair would be willing to have Jack or Troy from Willabend kind of address their perspective on the issue.
Sure.
But again, I want to make clear that my goal, if, if the board wants to proceed with such a proposal, is, again, infill development on conforming lots on advanced wastewater treatment. This is not a proposal that would address a single site. The goal is to address a multitude of sites, conforming sites with infill development with wastewater access. So I just want to make that clear one more time as I continue to go through potential options that would accommodate this and other proposals.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just take a minute for the record, Jack McLeany, attorney for Southworth Mashpee Properties, the owner, with me is Troy Miller, who's the director of development for the, for the company. And, you know, as Evan said, we've been, we approached Evan a couple of months ago. We have this site, which we've shown before. It's five acres. There's a couple acres of wetlands. It is the proverbial hole in the donut in our property. It is not part of our special permit, and is smack dab in the middle of our 440-some-odd acres. And, you know, we approached Evan looking about exploring ways that we might be able to develop this in a somewhat more intensive way than would be allowed by the R3 zoning that applies there. It's, it's not part of our special permit, so we would only be permitted to do probably three single-family homes on one-acre lots there. And, you know, frankly, we think there's an opportunity to do something that would be a better fit from the town's perspective and for us to sort of integrate it into the larger working project. And, and the goal is to work with Evan to find a template that could, you know, work for us with what we're trying to do, but also be a model for sort of infill development on orphan parcels, if you will, around the, around the town. So I'll let Troy speak briefly to some of the design objectives and criteria that are reflected on these renderings that we've been working through.
Yeah, thank you very much. Troy Miller, I'm the chief development officer for Southworth Communities. And basically, as Jack mentioned, this is kind of the hole in the donut of what is Willabend community. It has an existing home on a septic system here, and will, you know, obviously be, this is an opportunity for us to take this property and take it off onto our wastewater treatment facility. And as Jack mentioned, kind of talking with Evan over the last few months, hopefully creating a little different product type here and a little different form that could be useful throughout the town as kind of a model for this type of development that is a little bit more, from our perspective, one of the things we're really trying to achieve is a greater street scene, some, a walkability, and then some shared public open space that are common elements with these cottage products. And so if you don't mind, Evan flipping kind of down to some of these renderings that show a little bit more of the street scene, the idea here is to create great connectivity between the front porches and the sidewalks, have a walkable community that all has this shared village green approach that is readily accessible to the, to the side. So one of the things here that we feel like that while this is part of Willabend community, it also, I think, is very scalable to other product types within the community and provides an opportunity, as you look at your comprehensive plan as you are now, to think about ways to create housing at different levels in a form that is attractive and can provide some of that density that you need in areas now that you are becoming more able to, given your wastewater treatment expansion that is taking place. Happy to take any questions or any comments in regards to the style, and one of the things we're focused on here, too, is creating some differentiation between the models and looking to try to create a little bit of an eclectic but shared theme of a traditional Cape Cod village.
First of all, I was gonna ask you about the numbers we have, but this ain't part of the special permit, so.
Yeah, this, this is not part of the special permit. And we, yeah, we would be asking for a rezoning template.
I'm looking at these. I know that this is a drawing, but there's no access to the golf course from here?
There will be. Yes, sir. Yes, it'll be connected through, via cart path, to the rest of our community on both the north and south side.
And another thing, we're always looking to have at least affordable housing being built. I don't see none of these affordable houses. Is there any chance off-site that you can do affordable housing? Because we're giving you more housing for where you only get trade. I'd like to see to get something out of this, because I know you're not gonna put affordable housing in here.
Yeah, and we.
Don't kid. You know, you're not, okay.
Yeah, we had talked about that with Evan, and, you know, an in-kind contribution, or, you know, many towns will have a monetary opt-out or, you know, in lieu of payment or whatever, so those funds can be allocated to another site. You know, we, we have not, and obviously not our intent to do an affordable project here. That's not what we were looking at, but we recognize that need, and, you know, Troy understands, and management understands, that, you know, that would be, you know, part of the equation here, and we're open to that discussion.
They look nice. I like the way you did, and they're all a little different. It's, you know, it's nice with the project.
Thank you.
It seems like that's a good idea to go, you know, get much housing we can. I like to see some.
And take him off the.
In the initial draft I presented, Dennis, it included the, you know, the state inclusionary suggested language that requires onsite provision of affordable housing units, offsite provision, or a payment in lieu of. And that's something that would be discussed, I think, with the board once we have a more complete zoning proposal is, we can discuss what the thresholds are, whether or not there's a greater incentive for rental or lesser incentive for homeownership, et cetera, et cetera. So I just, we just wanted to give you a general update of where we are in regards to our internal conversations, and I want to let you know that it's my intent on working on this more thoroughly and providing you a thoughtful draft that's in enough of a complete form where you can react to it and perhaps begin to opine whether or not it's something you'd really like to proceed with.
One, if you don't mind, addressing the affordability component. As an employer in, in the town of Mashpee as well, we very much recognize the need for that and are welcome to talking about the off-site opportunity as well as the fee in lieu component, and would be welcome to, happy to talk about opportunities that would provide that workforce housing, that affordable component for a lot of what we are experiencing as well as employers.
You started to work, I watched that, but that all out. What are you gonna put there, something similar to this?
Willow Circle.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a six-lot subdivision. And we, we did make some effort there to see if we could donate the house, but it was kind of unworkable. But I, I think we've also discussed with the board, we recently acquired the Santuit Inn, and converting that to workforce housing for our, for our staff, because it's, it's really getting to be a crisis, you know?
Sure is.
Being able to, to find housing for people who want to come and work.
Yeah.
And the, the project across Quinacquahit there, Willow Circle, that's another example of where we've taken off a, a house or maybe two off of septic, and those will all be tied into our wastewater treatment as well.
Especially right in that area there.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Troy, what's the rough square footage of?
The footprint itself is about 1,600 square feet, and it's a story and a half, so anywhere from 2,000 to 2,400 square feet on the.
Okay.
So like, but the, not to use the word cottage, it's different, but like, can you see, are there like three different setups, whatever?
Correct, yes, sir. So these, these provide for slightly different floor plans, but more so in the elevations and the look from the exterior, trying to vary dormers and.
It's nice.
Yeah, the parking's in the back. It's, it's nice.
Yeah. I do want to make clear to the board, it's my intent on providing a proposal that's relatively hybrid, but focuses on a form-based approach of regulation here, where minimums and maximums are defined in the zoning. So we would want to encourage a smaller footprint that's consistent with the cottage court typology, but allows for a range of building dimensions that have consistent relationships with the street, and then have defined architectural features that can be, you know, plug and played, as, if you will, on a consistent floor plate, floor plate of the structure that has a defined story height. So it provides some flexibility, and this is why you can make a program that accommodates Willabend, but would accommodate also conforming sites that are not five acres, that are like, you know, one acre in the R3.
Mary?
I just think that you should listen to my comments before. I'm, I'm very concerned about increasing the density without progress for the town.
I think you should listen to my comments before. Very concerned about density without progress for the town. This, this development could be done under chapter 40B, where 25% of the units would have to be affordable. You know, if you want to zone up, I want to see something that's being zoned down. I want to see open space that you're gonna give the town. I, I, I'm only saying this because I was called upon by the chair. I'm not really in a great mood, so I hope it comes out right. But I am getting a lot of people telling me that during this water crisis that we have, that why would the planning board even think about increasing density anywhere? And I know you have, you know, you have a plan to deal with flushes and nitrogen and all of that, but to get this through town meeting, you need a two-thirds vote, okay? And I'm telling you, open space and affordable housing, that will get it through. I'm not doing it to be mean. I just know what I can sell at town meeting.
Well, we, we appreciate the heads up, and we're aware of that, and we have some thoughts about open space and, and maybe, you know, reclaiming some areas that, you know, are bogs now, frankly, that, and, and letting them re-vegetate. We've had preliminary discussions with Drew about that, but that would be a big improvement to water quality by taking.
May I say, public open space, right?
Right, right. We hear you. That's.
We still have the ancient way stickers up?
We still do, yeah. No, we still have traffic down there.
There's, there's some work that's being done. You might want to check in with our conservation administrator. There's some work being done to restore wetlands and rivers in town. We have a Department of Natural Resources, and so does the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. Our community preservation committee did a joint project with land that wasn't even in our town. They promised us they would come and help us. So, you know, it, it also could be some type of assistance with that work as well. And I know Lynn knows more about that stuff than I do. She remembers names better than I do, but there's some really cool projects going on, and they also fall into our municipal preparedness. Is that M?
Municipal vulnerability preparedness.
There's some, there's some help that the town needs to deal with the impacts of climate change. So when we say, you know, when, I know, when, you know, people go, oh, you developed, go find some land to give us. You know, there's no land out there, right? They don't make new land. But there, there might be other ways that you could assist us.
And we have had those conversations with the environmental, and I think what you're talking about in terms of mitigation and, the idea of actually taking some of these bog features back to a naturalized stream condition and create a better, a better system and a better ecosystem overall is very much in target with what we're looking to do here.
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right, committee, I'm sorry. Committee reports. Cape Cod Commission?
Yeah.
So I went to the meeting of, I think it's a subcommittee on the Cape Cod Commission about the twin, the.
Twin Brooks?
Twin Brooks. I don't, yeah, it's 35 Scudder. I know that Ed works on it. He was at the meeting.
Can tell you anything you want to know?
So it's just, it's just very, it's just very interesting. The next meeting is the 17th.
Correct.
And it's still in subcommittee, right? And it's, it's just that whole thing, and I think we brought, brought that up with Evan a little bit, about lands that are impacted already, but we perceive as open space, like ball fields and golf courses and stuff like that, and how, some people are saying that's redevelopment, some people are saying, oh, no, that's new development. Do you know what I mean? So that whole thing, I just encourage everybody to watch that carefully, that whole thing, how that plays out, because it's coming to a town near you.
And. Community preservation.
Community preservation. So town meeting approved, $50,000 for our housing production plan.
So town meeting approved $50,000 for our housing production plan and all the other CPA articles.
Sounds great.
We had to put up a little bit of a fight for that, and we got it done. So, that's it.
Design review.
My last design review. 151, the Shell Station there, that we started and closed the past month and a half. The owners of property are taking on themselves, doing a garret, family convenience, which is one in Falmouth, there's one crossing the Bell Tower Plaza. On the side point, I think it's a nice concept, but began with signage, which we approved. I think it's gonna be, he said, what was the start date? He said that it had a pretty early start to June 1st or something crazy.
I don't recall, Joe.
Yeah, it's not gonna happen, but it opened us. But that was it.
Plan review.
Plan review, reviewed a very conventional contractor bay building in the I-1 district off of, I think it was Mercantile, for a landscaper. Relatively simple building design, 100% compliant with the zoning bylaw, requires a special permit from the Board of Appeals and will be under review shortly, but the plan review recommended approval with conditions.
Okay. Environmental oversight, didn't meet. Historic District Commission.
Now, do we call upon Jack as like a consultant on this next one? Honestly?
Who's gonna be our representative?
You know what's hilarious? They called a meeting.
Come on.
And he can no longer serve because it's a planning board representative, and they, so Jack, in three years, never had a meeting with that committee.
What was the committee?
It's the Military Civilian Advisory Council.
Oh, yeah.
But didn't he say something like he has...
And so, yes, they finally called a meeting.
They never meet.
Well, it met a lot back in the 90s.
Yeah, it hasn't met since Jack has appointed to it.
Evan, he said something on his last meeting that he will, he will still stay on it because he's a representative of the town.
I don't wanna represent Jack's position here. It's just that I think it's humorous that in three years, as your representative and the...
For one time.
He's never had a meeting, and when it is time for him to step off the board as a result of his appointment as fire chief, there's a meeting.
Do you know when the meeting is?
I do not.
Oh!
It was an offhand conversation. I would have to ask Jack, but I'll let you know.
So is he gonna continue on?
I don't know.
Okay.
Ed?
Just wanna, Mr. Chairman, just wanna tell, inform you and the board of some inspections I've been conducting. So Willow Circle came up. I was there today, in fact. Willow Circle has been cleared, and the building that was there is, I'd say, 80% demolished, 90%. The structure's gone. The foundation's still being worked on. Most of it will be done, I think it'll be gone this week. I'll be conducting inspections there next week as well, because they're gonna start prepping the road, excuse me, prepping the sewer. So we'll probably do just a flyby inspection for sewer. Also, Casper Circle, an older one, the one I think that was talked about over by Quashnet, that's finishing. So Willow Circle's just starting, Casper Circle, they're coming up to subgrade.
Where is Casper Circle?
It's off of Lowell Road or Old Barnstable Road approaching. It's in the Quashnet Valley Golf Course.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
It'll be accessed off of Old Barnstable.
It has like a portion of that great hay road that had to be improved to access it.
Right, so there'll be a new road now with a road sign and so on. So the road is coming up to subgrade. He's sent me the lab results for the sieve analysis. I approved them to him today. I told him that it would look fine. He's gonna start placing gravel on Monday, on Tuesday. So they're gonna get closer to getting to pave. They're gonna pave in the next couple of weeks.
Good.
So we're gonna, you know, get those inspections done for everyone and document all that, but it's starting to move again.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else?
You make the motion to adjourn.
Yeah, you gotta make the last motion.
Are you sure? I make a motion to adjourn the May 4th meeting of the planning board.
No.
You're stuck here. Dennis!
Suck it.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you all.